I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There have been some suggested changes on the approval of the agenda. One is item F under the board business that we possibly just remove that. I think our timeframe has been and gone and passed.
What's the next amendment, Mr. Mayor?
Pardon me?
What other amendment we need?
I think that's the only thing I'm aware of. Roy, do you see anything that you'd like to bring up?
No, Mr. Mayor. I move that the agenda be approved as amended.
Okay. Do we have a second? The approval of the agenda is amended.
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Comments by the mayor? We had a good week last week in regard to, say, the busing. We had some downtown parking for the ball games and it was good to see these buses come in and pick up sports participants and carry them out to the game. It looked like the buses were being used. We have a lot of very positive things happening in our community and we saw where some of the big projects that are going to be cranked up have began to clean and clear their areas for their projects to be built on Russell Street, Ergon, and the group out of Oxford, the Belford Group, the Allen Kimball Group. So we have a lot of positive things are beginning to happen in the community and if you drive around a little bit, you can see some of these places and things that are going on. Do we have approval of the minutes of the Starfield Board of Alderman's special call meeting of April the 20th, 2006, and August the 18th, 2006?
Mr. Mayor, could we take these minutes up separately, please, sir?
Sure. We'll go with the April 20th, 2006 first. Do we have any corrections?
Just the spelling of my name, Mr. Mayor. I think that's why they are back was because I questioned the spelling of my name.
All right. Name spelling. Anything else?
Order number seven. Let's scratch the abbreviation in the title there.
Mr. Mayor, I will be recorded as no on these minutes. I was out away from the board meeting due to an illness. Some of those no on these minutes.
Okay. With those corrections, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? We have a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections. Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? August the 18th meeting. Corrections.
Roy, is order number two correct with your vote and everything?
Let me take a look at it. Let me see that report first. I'm looking for the order number two. Let's take a look at it here, Mr. McLean. Yes, sir.
It is.
Yes, sir. And order number two, let me see. Oh, the vote, I'm sorry, you told me to let if I was looking at the language there, to adopt the amendment. Pair with me one second. I've been watching these. Yeah, that was a motion to table. That's right. The order one from seven and I did vote against the motion to table. That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Order number two is correct. Yes, sir. Because the gentleman from five offered the motion to table with a second from the gentleman number two and so it was two dissenting votes. That's correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of April, I mean of August the 18th?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Thank you. It brings us down to citizens' comments. Do we have anyone who would like to make a comment this time? You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me. Second, the August 30th minutes were on the table. This is for information only, I assume, at this point?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, let me see. One thing, we'll move further. I'm glad to see our contract engineer, Mr. Webb, present with us this evening. We appreciate all that he does.
We're gonna have a report from him later.
Well, that's outstanding. She'll receive it favorably.
This sounds like billable hours, hell.
They probably are. So some comments. Mr. Turner?
Good to be in Board of Alderman. The citizens, we will definitely need those buses on election day, September 26th. We need time that they be at certain places because sometime we see them maybe passing We have a concern with the code enforcement and the code compliance. I don't know which is which, but a lot of people are getting, I don't know who Donald Sutcliffe is and I did know who Don Lyle was. I don't know which is which, but Sutcliffe is getting a little edgy about whether it's code enforcement or code compliance. And we just like to know when are the vice mayor leaving office. A lot of people are itching to fill out the necessary papers for Ward 6.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Lyle has retired, I think, as of last week and we have a new code compliance person in that position that will take his place. He did an excellent job for us. Anyone else would like to speak their three minutes? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Charlotte Fuqua. I'm Ward 5, but tonight I'm representing Starfield in Motion. This is a little bit out of order as far as making sense, but shortly, representing from the Catholic Church, will we make a presentation to you requesting the removal of the bike lanes during temporary periods during the week. Bike lane on University Drive directly in front of the Catholic Church. Starfield in Motion would like to say that we feel that the bicycle lane on University Drive has been tremendously successful. It is heavily used. Recent bicycle census was done with over, counting over 200 riders on the University Drive bike lane and it has laid a groundwork for other projects that we have done, Starfield in Motion has done in coordination with the Alderman, such as the Lynn Lane project and working currently on Safe Routes to School project. And we are concerned about the importance of the bicycle lane and the importance of maintaining its entire integrity at all times. And we have some specific safety issues with eliminating part of the bicycle lane for even a brief period of time each week. The safety issues we primarily have in that regard have to do with eastbound cars being forced across the center lane if vehicles are allowed to park on the eastbound side in the bicycle lane. In that particular area, the bicycle lane is not as wide as a car and so the cars that are parked there would be into, in the traffic lane and quite probably forcing eastbound cars across the center line. We also have concern for the safety of bicyclists. For these bicycle lanes on a street such as we have on University Drive, for these lanes to be effective, bicyclists need to behave or ride in a very predictable manner that is in the lane. Suddenly forcing these bikes into an already congested area, a narrowed area, we think presents an unnatural and unnecessary traffic hazard at that point. And we do have confirmation that there are bicycles that do use University Drive on Sunday morning. That basically is what I want to say. We have safety issues with eliminating the bike lane even for a brief period of time on Sunday morning. We can well appreciate the concerns that the church has and the problems with parking and perhaps we could suggest that the newly formed Commission on Disabilities and Accessibility might be willing to work with the church to come up with a creative solution that would not involve removal of the bicycle lane and the creation of a more congested and hazardous area, not only for motorists but for cyclists alike.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Remind you, three minutes. Please denote, speak over three minutes.
My name is Eve Gentile. I'm living at 301 Fairfield Drive. I can't speak with the community because I'm concerned about the pedestrian in Starkville. I searched in MSU and in town with the police department and with your secretary if we have a law for pedestrian because pedestrian in Starkville seems to go everywhere that they want, even if they have cars or bicycle in front of them. They think that they're the king of the street. And we realize that there's no law in Starkville for pedestrians to, not give them a ticket, but to force them to go on certain area and to walk on certain area. So I'm coming to ask the Board to provide a new law for pedestrian. We're a big city now, now that we have a university and it's getting bigger and bigger. And the pedestrian in MSU are allowed to do everything that they want, so they think that they could do everything that they want everywhere in Starkville. And for myself, as a driver and as a pedestrian, sometime it's dangerous in Starkville. And Monday morning, when I get back last week to my class, I was so stressed to drive in Starkville that I couldn't stand it anymore. So I asked around if people were concerned about that too and they say yes, that there's a lot of people in Starkville. I spoke with a lot of people and there's a lot of people are concerned that pedestrian walk everywhere that they want. And I think that the Board should have law for pedestrian to tell them where to go because they don't know now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Three minutes, please.
Got it. Three minutes? Three items, one minute each. Publicly, I would like to thank Mrs. Boyd and the Sanitation Department for the outstanding job they did on my street last week when a trash bag had either fallen off the back of the truck or had been dragged into the middle of the street, torn open by a dog. Before any of us in the neighborhood, that was the morning I had to go work early, didn't have a chance to clean it, before anybody else could clean it, when the trash truck came by, they thoroughly picked up and did an outstanding job. Ms. Boyd, where are you? Thank you. Secondly, I firmly support St. Joseph's Church and their request. I believe their request is reasonable. I am not a member of the parish, but I have attended many services there with Father Michael Bryan, who's one of the people in the world that I respect and like most, was the priest. So I believe that their request is reasonable and I request to consider it favorably. Thirdly, I am totally opposed to extending alcohol sales on nights of, weeknights of football games. Football games are normally over at 10 o'clock. There is plenty of time, between 10 o'clock and 12 o'clock, for some bar patrons to get thoroughly drunk enough to go out and kill somebody on the highway. They don't need an extra hour to do it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Stan Sherwood, Starfield Recycling. I'd just like to thank each and every one of you for your cooperation efforts of getting the recycling drop-off bins put back in place where we can start collecting material again. And I just wanted to remind you that the deadline is nearing on the grant application for DEQ for the type of recycling you wish to fly for. Thank you.
Hey, Stan. I brought my recycling, like cardboard, this morning to Fire Station 1 and it looked like that bin was getting close to overflowing.
Yes. Those bins were placed where we were told to place and we couldn't service them, we couldn't cross the curb with a vehicle. And we got that worked out this evening and I've turned them the opposite way and they'll be empty first thing in the morning. Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, that moves us down to public appearances and the first on the public appearances is Austin Waller. You hear?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Board of Alderman, thank you all for taking the time to listen to this. As was stated earlier, I'm the representative for St. Joseph's Church and we have requested an exemption. If I can hand this to you. And before we start, just Miss Fuqua's comments on the bike path and it being tremendously successful. We don't dispute that and proud to have it and happy to have Starfield in Motion and several parishioners at St. Joseph's are members of Starfield in Motion. That being said, they have communicated to me that even though they are members of Starfield in Motion, they see the necessity, the necessity of approving this exemption. And what this exemption is, is sometime back when the bike path concept was come up with and they installed the bike path along the front, the westbound side of St. Joseph's Catholic Church, it took approximately 13 parking spaces away from parishioners. And those were parking places that were used due to limited, the limited means of parking at St. Joseph's. They were used to, by elderly members of our parish, also handicap members of our parish, parents unloading their children. And later in the evenings, they were also used for students and high school students attending for youth ministry purposes and the youth mass in the evening. Without those 13 spaces, well, it actually took away more, but in our proposal, in spirit of compromise, we have asked for 13 spaces. But by taking those 13 spaces away, it is, A, created a difficulty on our elderly parishioners and handicap parishioners to have access to the church, B, to the children in the evenings, which youth ministry often takes, goes into the evening as late as 8:30, and it is creating a burden on them. They're having to park way down the street. So what we have proposed or asking for is for an exemption for the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The reason for those are, we have a 9:00 o'clock mass, we have an 11:30 mass, and then we have a 5:30 mass. And throughout the course of the day, there are various church activities and religious education courses and those types that are going on throughout the day. And our parishioners, may on their behalf, am here asking that the Board grant an exemption for the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. just on Sundays. And we believe that is a reasonable request, but we come before the Board in spirit of compromise and hope you would rule favorably for us. I would like to address the safety issue. One way I believe that the safety issue could be addressed is common sense. Bikers are always to be on their guard, just as drivers should be on their guard as far as being respectful for those who are using our streets. And one instance that comes to mind for me as far as safety goes is on Montgomery Street and University. There is a, the bike path cuts across the lane of traffic in which you would have to turn onto, I guess that would be 389 or is that Montgomery North? And that's an instance where technically, if you look at it, you're saying, well, this is a biker crossing a lane of traffic. That's a danger. However, that is a situation in which bikers and drivers are asked to use caution. That's what we would ask in this situation, is in those instances where if an exemption is granted, certainly some caution would be necessary, but we don't think it is too much of a burden to ask for an exemption for 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sundays. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Board members got questions?
Mr. Mayor, my distinguished colleagues at this table, I certainly find that the request of St. Joseph's Catholic Church is a very reasonable request. These are worshippers who are seeking to park so that they can go inside their church to worship their Lord and their own way. The gentleman from the church, Mr. Waller, has indicated that prior to the installation of the bike lanes, there were 13 parking spaces that were routinely used by the church. The bike path removed those 13 parking spaces. This request is for one day of the week, one day per week. The request made by Mr. Waller is one that certainly would not interfere with the bikers' use of University Drive during the time of this exemption. If approved by the Board, the bikers can have other alternate paths of travel at this entire location. We're not talking about the entire length of University Drive. They can use the street with due diligence and with reasonable care and caution, just like other motorists. The bikers certainly have the right to use the sidewalks there, so there's nothing, in my opinion, that would preclude the bikers from utilizing University Drive in their course of traveling to and from their destination. So I certainly support this particular request and I think that the Board should grant it and I'm always glad to see people wanting to find a park space to go to church. And so, and that's a good thing. So hopefully it'll be the will of the majority to support this request and I can speak for myself personally. So personally, I'm in favor of it and I'd like to hear from other distinguished colleagues and hopefully that we can get a majority vote and allow this exemption from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on Sundays only. So hopefully that'll be the support of the Board. So I yield the floor, Mr. Mayor.
So is that, you make that in the form of motion or is this suggestion that somebody make a motion?
I'm just suggesting that at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Discussion. I see, is there any other discussion in regard to the request from the Catholic Church?
Mr. Mayor, question. Mr. Waller or anyone else from the church here? The 13 spaces you talk about stretch from what point specifically to what point specifically?
Chief Lindley, and I'm not speaking for Chief Lindley, but he and I went out there one afternoon and if you look at, there's a building, if you're facing the church to the left, those 13 spaces stretch from the means of egress from the church, from the backside, that's the far left side, up the street, and there's a white building to the right and there's several parking places in front of that house that's there on the right side of the church from the means of ingress from the church. And those 13 spots, and actually, back when, last year or previous, the parking was all along from almost Coconuts way up the street, several blocks. And so you're looking at right in front of the building that is, right to the right of the building that's for rent, up past the means of egress at St. Joseph's, you have the church and you, on the right side, you enter, the left side, on the backside of the church, you exit. Those spaces between there, on the westbound lane of University and then up, I believe it's about four more spaces east of that, along University.
In front of, at a few houses.
That's right. That's right. Yes, yes, that's right.
But they park, I mean, all the way from Madison Street all the way down to roughly South Madison Street. I mean, they really, people are parking even all the way up to...
About the south side.
Well, they park everywhere they can within legality and they park all the way up to the Bulldog Deli, as a matter of fact.
Mr. Attorney, so what the church is asking is for just the 13, if you could just get the 13 parking spaces?
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly what we're asking. We're asking for no more, just 13.
Mr. Webb or AC Outlaw, have y'all taken a look at this? And I guess we've made a representation that this would inconvenience cyclists. I think the more relevant issue is if a car is parked on that east side and a traveling car goes to pass that parked car, these 13 spaces, does that car cross the double yellow line or does it fall within that lane of traffic? And that's how I see the issue because if we're going to purposely allow traffic to cross that double yellow line, that seems like that creates a liability issue or just simply a safety issue. Forget liability.
I think it would require them to force them out of that double yellow, but more important, what does it do with bicycles when the lane ends just on Sunday? Would they send them up on the sidewalk, they would throw them out into traffic and where is our liability if they're out in the traffic because the bike lanes walk because of parked cars that we have and they get hit in the traffic? They just can't end the bike lane without saying, say, the bike lane ends, do something. Can't just end one 12-hour period without assuming some liability that's what they're going to do. And I think the same to, if you look at it real closely, if you have to spit, I'm not sure if we don't get somebody hurt by ending it and just sending them another direction.
Right, but just to be clear, I know we have an issue of bicyclists, whether that be inconvenient or legal, but would a car that's passing that parked car cross that double yellow line or would they be able to do it within that traffic line? Of course, the traffic, the center lines have moved as a result of the bike lane and what I was told originally was... what I was told originally was that that car would be forced to cross that double-yellow line.
I didn't know exactly where they were talking about that. I think the line was moved to the north there, that you wouldn't be forced, because the parked vehicle would be forced all the same.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? Mr. Webb, let's say if it's the will of this board, and I'm just talking for discussion, let's just say if a majority of the board, and I don't know whether a majority supports this or not, but let's just say if a majority of this board supports the exemption on Sundays from eight AM to eight PM, and let's say that there's a motion that supports this, allowing the engineer and the police chief to coordinate this, you know, to make this happen. If we have a strong governmental interest to allow these worshippers to park on the side of the street, am I correct that you and/or the police chief can come up with some type of design or plan for us to implement this exemption? I mean, can you not, can you do that for us, if that's the will of the board?
Well, we could divert the bicycles onto the sidewalk, but we can't move to the center line for just twelve hours. The center line has got to be there for the other seven days or six days.
Okay, make a long story short and put it in just plain English here, if we want to give this exemption or grant it for this twelve hours, and we say yes, can you, as our contract engineer, coordinate with the board to make it happen? In other words, if we want it to happen, can you make it happen from a professional engineering point of view? That's my question to you. Yes or no?
Well, again, I can't, I can't steward the center line over just for twelve hours. Depending on where that location is, we'll have to run through the area. But if that, that's going to go people over the double-yellow line, who wish to avoid parked cars. I don't think we can do that.
So what do we need to do to make it, to implement it, if that's what we want to do? What should we do to implement that if we want to do it? Because in town, there are places where there are no bike lanes, but we allow people to park on the side of the street to go to that place to worship on Sundays. And I personally like to accommodate the worshippers or the parishioners from Saint Joseph Catholic Church. So what is your recommendation as to how we can accommodate this, if that is the majority view tonight?
I would suggest that if the center line is broken, then we would either end the bike lane there completely, or divert it onto the sidewalk, or end it there and say, move the center line back over to where it should be to allow cars to go past parked vehicles, and put the bike path back into the track, shared road, for that portion of the street.
So in other words, with that, what you just said, we can do it if that's the will of the board? You can make that happen for us?
I think we make, but it can't be just for twelve hours. It has to be for permanent.
Well, if we do it for permanent, then, given the stretch that Mr. Valla has indicated, the bikers still will have some safe route to travel in, we'd make it permanent. Is that correct? So is your recommendation that we just make that little stretch? And we're not talking about a great distance over, Mr. Webb.
We're talking about better part than half a block.
Okay, about a half a block. So you would recommend that we just make it permanent, if we're going to do it?
If the center line is where it's going to interfere with someone passing parked cars, we recommend that. If it's not, then we might work out another solution. And we're talking just on the north side of the street.
That's my understanding.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from other members. I'm full of support of it, of this proposal.
Anyone else would like to have a stab at this?
Mr. Webb, if you moved the center line to accommodate parked cars and traveling cars, what then happens on the other side of the street, which has an eleven-foot traffic pattern, a bike lane, and parked cars? Does that, in essence, end the bike lane on University Drive?
We could do it on both sides of the street. The other side, we've gone, doesn't help parking for either side for a waste, and it comes back out further east on the south side, and it very well might be. It shifts it over. I don't have permission, but I've known exactly where it was closing, but we couldn't end for that section of the road on both sides.
So are you suggesting, then, if we were to make a permanent solution to accommodate parking there, that in essence, we would be doing away with the bike lane, a dedicated bike lane? Of course, we could always go back to share the road, but this would necessitate the end of a bike lane if we were to make a permanent solution of changing the center line? Moving the center line over to accommodate that traffic?
I don't think we can allow the shift across the center line to accommodate parking, so we'd have to move it to the center. Because if we shifted them over, and they straddle the center line, it's always something we did, and we didn't have the liability to get something else out. If you shift it every day, it's a disservice.
Right. I mean, I think the decision at the table, unfortunately, we have some physical constraints with University Drive, and if we're to provide a permanent solution, and that may be the will of the board, it seems like the permanent solution would be to remove bike lanes from University Drive. And I'm okay if that's the will, if that's what the board wants to do, that's a step they want to take. But unfortunately, the physical constraints of that road don't allow these types of, this type of a compromise, if you will.
Bobby, you did say, did you not, there could possibly be some diversion on the sidewalk, on the north side?
But it still, yeah, it's a center line problem. You've got the direction problem, and it's still bad.
But it would not necessarily end the bike lane, as we know it. You could move the center line and divert to sidewalk for a half a block or so.
I think you're looking at one half of the street. If you move that center line over, then all of a sudden, you have the exact same situation on what we're calling the south side of the street, if you follow what I'm saying, because right now, it's tight again. And I think, and perhaps we just need to have the engineer and police chief present a proposal to accommodate these, rather than working on the back of an envelope.
You could possibly divert on the sidewalk on both sides.
You have something to say?
Oh, I did. I think Alderman Cox finally got to what needs to be done. We're going back and forth, back and forth, saying this, that, and nothing is actual. So if I may, I would like to make a motion that Mr. Webb, city engineer, and the chief of police work out the safety issues in granting this request to Saint Joseph Catholic Church, and bring us back a report at our next board meeting, and I think that would be September twelfth.
No, I think it's...
We do have a special call meeting on the twelfth.
Do we?
We have a call meeting on the twelfth.
Okay.
And they work out the safety issues and bring this back.
With their recommendations?
With their recommendation of the safety of granting this request to Saint Joseph Catholic Church.
Do we have a second?
I second it. Ms. F, just to be clear, now, you're in favor of the request, basically, it's not up to the city engineer, you just want them to work it out and bring it back to us?
I am in, I am in favor of granting the exception for Sundays from eight AM to eight PM. But my motion is that the city engineer, Mr. Webb, and the chief of police work out the safety, in and all, whatever it takes to make this safe, to grant this request.
I second it, Mr. Mayor.
We have a second. I think we've discussed it pretty thoroughly here. All those in favor, the most say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Superintendent Burksfield?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Mayor Kemp and Vice Mayor Roy Perkins for being, speaking at our convocation in August. Thank you to the Board of Aldermen for your continued support. Our school is off to a good start. We have approximately five thousand students participating in the Starkville School District this year. As usual, we have the same carpool issues that we hope that are cleared up by Labor Day weekend, and it's our hopes that that's the case. I'd like to commend Chief Lindley, as well as Assistant Chief Outlaw, for providing policemen to expedite the opening of the school. Second page of your handout, and each of you have a packet to make a little sense of the calculations. You have two thousand, two thousand six, two thousand seven tax levy calculations. We, by law, can only have fifty-five operational meals, as most of you know, this year. You will see that we currently have fifty-three point six eight in operational meals, minus the fifty-five, that gives us about a one point three two meal that we can grow to. But at this point, we've given ourselves a little drawing room. A meal in Starkville, based on the figures that Mr. Logan received from Ms. Kite, is in a little over two hundred and one thousand dollars, which you'll see there on your final tax base. One of the things that is different from this year from last year, in nineteen eighty-six, school bond and interest, that has come off the row this year. You've got also a short-term, two thousand one, two thousand two shortfall note that came off the note, the row. We ask our board if we may to capture that amount, which would, came to a total of two point four one meals. The board voted for that, and what we're doing with that is for technology in our district, as well as capital improvements in our facilities. Second page, you will see the millage rates in the Starkville School District from ninety-five to two thousand seven. You'll note that in the last four years, we have been right at fifty-eight point eight six. We did raise, in two thousand five, we did raise our millage a little bit, just in case our state had a funding issue at the state level, so that we could take care of teacher pay raises, and that fifty-nine point nine eight is the reason why that's up a little bit. The last page, as far as your budget is concerned, our budget is concerned, we've got a total budget, revenues of thirty-seven million. You can see the expenditures down there, approximately thirty-seven million as well. We are exceeding our revenues over our expenditures of a hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars this year. Three years ago, we did lose some of our funding from the state. We had to make some cuts. This year, we were able to add back some teachers that we cut previously. We purchased two buses. We spent approximately two hundred thousand dollars in technology, computers. We did hire back our public information officer this year, some other programs, auxiliary programs in speech and debate, band program. We did out, extend some money, or play some money in those budgets for those extracurricular activities. In our area of test scores, we are maintained level three schools and all our two schools except Starkville High School and Henderson. Starkville High School is a level four. Henderson dropped to a level two. You see there, our results of the Mississippi Curriculum Test, set through Armstrong, and the next page, through Starkville High School. Two thousand five results, as they compare to two thousand six results this year, you can see down at Henderson where we dropped to a level six. You can see that in reading, language, and math, that we dropped in all three areas there. We are putting things in place currently to make sure that we can steady those scores, and not steady them, but exceed those for this next school year. And I think, I think this time next year, we will exceed the level three status at Henderson, and possibly may be level four or level five. Grade three and seven, you can see the results there, two thousand five, two thousand six, Mississippi Subjective Area Test, which are at the high school. We're tested Algebra I, Algebra, Biology I, US History, English II, multiple choice items, and then English II in the area of writing. We exceeded the state average in all of them, except US History, ninety-four point six percent passage rate there. The state average is ninety-five point nine percent. Certainly proud of that. We're also proud of our American, our ACT scores, as they relate to the state. Composite score for Starkville High School was twenty point four. Composite score for Mississippi was eighteen point eight. We were above average in the areas of English, math, reading, and science. So while we are proud of those scores, there's still obviously room to grow, and we are anticipating that for this next school year. At this time, I will entertain any questions that the board might have.
Any questions?
Dr. Burksfield, thank you for being here tonight, and certainly enjoyed your articles in the Starkville Daily News, and appreciate your efforts to improve communications with the community as a whole. Do have some constructive feedback, though, for you tonight, and of course, our schools, I believe, have the greatest impact on where we'll be as a community in twenty years. And you say, why would that be? Why isn't it zoning? Why isn't it recruiting efforts? Or our football team? Well, you hear the platitudes that our students are our future, and I agree with that, but it also affects who we can recruit here in our community from a business standpoint, and also residents and people that we'd like to come to Starkville. Our schools impact what this community will look like in twenty years. And my neighbors and I are concerned about where we are today, and there's a perception, and in some cases, a reality, that we're slipping, and we've slipped over the past several years, and I'll offer several examples to that. We see it in test scores, most notably in Henderson this past go-rounds. The teacher-to-student ratio has increased in some areas. Computer accessibility in our classrooms is lagging other communities. And I'd say some of our most involved and informed parents are making decisions to educate their children elsewhere. And that's a little bit harder to quantify for you, but that's what my neighbors are telling me, whether they're making decisions to send them to private schools, homeschool, or even making decisions not to live in our community, even though they work here. And then, of course, last year, we had significant distractions, whether they be legal or otherwise. And so tonight, I'd like to convey a sense of urgency to you and to our entire school system for improvement. Level three schools, we've talked last year, aren't good enough. A level two school in Starkville is simply unacceptable. And so I say all those things, you, the school board, and the schools are our experts, and I pledge my support of whatever we can do to assist you, but we simply need to have a sense of urgency. And I attended the last school board meeting, and you presented a plan for improvement at Henderson and throughout the school system. I want us to be bold, and I want us to have level five schools here, and I know you do too, but I want to make sure that the steps that we're taking are very actionable, and we'll see immediate results. And I again pledge my support, I know the entire mayor and board feel the same way, in pledging their support. We're all in this together, and I just want to convey that sense of urgency just one more time.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, and Dr. Burksfield, let me thank you and the school board for your leadership in this community. I'm over at Starkville High School from time to time, speaking at the school. I have a daughter in the twelfth grade, so I stay actively involved, you know, with the high school activities. And I want to say that, you know, we have a fine school board, and this board appoints, by law, four of the five school board members, and as an individual Alderman, as a citizen of this community, as a taxpayer, I give great deference to the decisions, acts, and actions made by the school board member, and certainly, I don't try to sit as a superbody to second-guess you all. So I just want to commend you for your leadership, for the school board's leadership, and I have contact with many parents in the Starkville public school system, and they, you know, are proud of our school system, and want you to just say, just continue and keep up in moving our district along, and we appreciate what the school board is doing, and we appreciate the fact that we have a very fine assistant superintendent that we have brought into the district. As you mentioned at the onset of your presentation, the mayor and I spoke just in August at the convocation, and we were just so delighted to be there. We saw the level of involvement, we saw the high enthusiasm, we saw the high interest from everybody that was in attendance there, and it was a great moment. I stayed there from beginning to end, and the whole convocation was entirely warm for our city. So we want to appreciate that and, and hopefully this board will continue, and I'm sure we will appoint very fine and distinguished individuals and citizens to the school board, uh, for the five-year term. So we appreciate you, and if anything that I can do as a citizen and as an alderman, you just let me know and I stand behind our district because we have one of the best districts in the state of Mississippi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to concur with Alderman Cox's comments and, and, and just make a simple point of clarification. When, when Dr. Birchfield was talking about what a mill was worth, that was for the school district, not the city, which encompasses property outside of the, so that figure of roughly two hundred thousand dollars is not a city mill, but a school district mill, just for clarification purposes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Brings us down to public hearing on the city of Starfall's budget. Mr. Cox, I believe you've got a slideshow for us, uh, well, a PowerPoint.
All right, well, much like at home when I can't find my remote control, I couldn't find my computer remote control, so I'm sorry I'm sitting on this side of the table rather than that one. But I did want to take the opportunity to have a very brief discussion about our two thousand and seven budget. Uh, tonight, we'll talk about the revenue portion, which is exceptionally, uh, good news, and at our next opportunity, we'll talk a little bit more about the expenditures. The first thing to talk about, uh, from a municipal budget is to, to talk about the fiscal year. It's, it's not like a calendar year. It starts, uh, here in October one. Uh, our budget consists of multiple funds, the first being the general fund, uh, which is fourteen point four million dollars this year. We have enterprise funds where our residents pay fees, um, or other associated costs like sanitation and electric, and then we also have restricted funds. Uh, as proud as we are to present a balanced budget each year, uh, we can't be too proud because it's required by state law, um, but we can be proud, again, this year that no tax increase is, is recommended in this budget. Our, uh, strong growth in the community, uh, allows us to increase our level of services within our existing tax base. We talked a little, or alluded to a little bit that our revenue has, um, grown significantly, and you certainly see that going back all the way to two thousand, uh, the city spent and invested in the community about ten million dollars, and this year, we're estimating to have about fourteen point four million available to us. Compared to last year, that's about seven hundred thousand dollars in additional revenues for us to spend and invest. Well, where does that revenue come from? We said it last year and we'll say it again this year. Sales tax is king as a, our community for us to continue to increase our services. We really receive those funds from our sales tax. When you go to the checkout and pay your seven percent sales tax, the city itself keeps eighteen point five percent, and, and they don't actually keep it at the point of sale. We get it about two months later, but it is the big king in our revenue system. A lot of people think it might be ad valorem or your property taxes for your house and your car, but in fact, that is a little less than twenty percent. And you see the other, uh, components to the budget. When I mentioned there's seven hundred additional thousand dollars, uh, to the budget, it is because sales taxes have increased, our property tax, um, has increased, uh, this year, and that's both from growth as well as reassessments, and we'll talk about that later. And then we also have additional revenue and interest. Uh, we'll earn about two hundred and forty thousand dollars from what we call our sweep accounts, uh, which provides us greater interest in the community. It's a way to manage our money smarter to, uh, to provide more revenue for us. So, sales tax revenue, uh, again, up considerably. It will now have over five million dollars of sales tax revenue, uh, coming back to the city of Starfall. That's about a double-digit ten percent growth from last year, uh, quite considerable. And in our budget this year, we have forecast a five percent conservative, uh, revenue growth in sales tax. Uh, again, it was double digits last year and, and we'll see how that goes, but we did want to use the most conservative numbers so that if we had any surprises, they would be good surprises and, and not the other kind. On property tax, you see how that, um, has increased rather steadily since two thousand. In the time period of two thousand to two thousand and two, you see those relatively smooth steps. That's a reflection of growth in the community, new buildings, um, new restaurants, uh, new houses. The jump from two thousand and two to two thousand and three is similar to the jump from two thousand and six to two thousand and seven. And, and what does that come from? Well, the, the county does a reappraisal every four years and we expect ten percent additional ad valorem revenue in two thousand and seven. Twenty-five percent being that growth we talked about, seventy-five percent of it, actually the appraiser came to your house and said, market conditions are such that, um, uh, that your house is now worth more. And that's done at the county, but of course, it does, uh, roll to the city from a property tax standpoint. And this is how, when you get your property tax bill, how it should look like. Um, here in the city, uh, we collect sixteen point one five mills. That hasn't changed for a number of years. Um, you heard Dr. Birchfield talk about the Starfall schools. Um, of course, when you get your property bill as a city of Starfall resident, over half of your taxes go to support, um, our schools. A really very small proportion actually goes to, uh, to the city itself. One other revenue stream is our restaurant tax, and again, a tremendous success story over the past, um, now almost twelve years since, um, this started, when we were at about five hundred thousand dollars in the first year of our restaurant tax, we're now well over a million and has increased, um, about twelve percent over last year. Now, I don't know how much longer that type of double-digit growth can continue, but as you see the dynamic, um, uh, change here in Starfall, um, it looks like it will continue, uh, hopefully in the future. And that's why we're so excited to have new businesses, new residents, new, uh, uh, new service industries come to, uh, come to town. Now, this two percent tax is distributed, um, in different ways, unlike sales tax, which, which primarily comes to the city and the state. Forty percent of that so-called tourism or, or, um, restaurant tax goes to our parks and rec, primarily for, um, capital improvements. Twenty percent goes to the university, fifteen percent to our visitors convention and OCDA, and ten percent comes to, uh, to the city. And this year, that's about one point four million dollars, and you see how that breaks out. Again, to the parks, uh, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be distributed to them from that restaurant tax, and then to the city is about a hundred and fifteen At our last budget work session, we talked a little bit about outside agencies and outside contributions, and the board tasked the, uh, budget committee with, um, with going back and making some recommendations on those contributions. And as you'll see is what we did in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, and what we're recommending in two thousand and seven, and for members of the audience, um, this is just the recommendation from, uh, the budget committee there may, and I expect, um, perhaps there'll be changes by the time it actually comes to the very end, um, but our recommendation is to provide five thousand dollars for the Red Cross. There is a proposal for CPR training, um, for city employees, and if that's brought to the board, we would address that as a, as a separate line item, um, and, uh, to pay for that fee if it was approved, as opposed to rolling it into a contribution. Other changes to note, um, we did make a reduction to community counseling, and we made an increase to, uh, the visitor center through, um, the Starfall Partnership. And the thought process there is, as we encourage them to move back downtown, uh, that this is, uh, an appropriate, uh, funding level for them. I've made one typo on this, uh, sheet. The recommendation from the, uh, from the budget committee on the, what's called the minibus, is a thirty-two thousand five hundred dollar level. That, um, thirty-two thousand five hundred is the same as last year, and we're requesting some additional information from, uh, that, uh, organization, um, prior to us making an increase there. The Department of Employment Security, the reason why that number is down, the city has been paying the phone bill for, uh, that department for a number of years. Kind of the history goes back. Apparently, that office was shut down by the state years ago, and to bring it back, the city and the county agreed to offset some of their expenses. That budget crisis or crunch is now well over, and, um, we're recommending that we reduce that. That four eighty represents three months' worth of phone so that, because we all are government bureaucracies, that it can, um, process through appropriately. We do recommend a seventy thousand dollar appropriation for the hor- horse park. Uh, we believe strongly in the economic impact that the horse park has provided for our community, and that if we continue to fund them at the level that, uh, they've requested, that not only will we have great events for our community, but we'll be bringing in, uh, significant economic revenues that will pay, um, in a great multiplier. Uh, I think the estimate was two million dollars economic impact this past year. We expect to see that even greater going forward. Fully funding the ambulance service, that is something that the city is not in a position to provide for itself, and, uh, this is, uh, what the hospital, uh, requested, and we're providing that fully. The Humane Society has an increase from last year that's primarily due to the fact that we, uh, moved into a brand-new building last year and we weren't fully able to appreciate, um, all of the expenses associated with that building, and that's why we came through with a full, uh, allocation of that ninety-three thousand. We did put several stipulations that we requested of the Humane Society. Number one is that we look at Saturday hours. Um, we believe that would provide a great service to, uh, to the community, especially to, to working people, um, and potentially that would, uh, require them to adjust some of their other hours or perhaps be in addition, but that was one request that we made. Two, we asked to put together a contract, uh, with them so that our expenses would be regular and routine, and we would both be able to agree upfront over a multi-year period, uh, what those contributions would be. Of course, the Humane Society also relies on donations and it would, it would help that as well. The library sees a, a slight increase, um, although the majority of that is for paving its, um, its parking lot. And then the last item of, of great note is under the, uh, the arts. Previously, we funded, um, several of the, uh, the local arts individually. We found, and, and that, that number, my second mistake, and I'm sorry, should be seven thousand dollars there. Um, we found that the Arts Council was also donating to the theater, to the symphony, um, et cetera, and we were having a difficult time making a decision around those worthy organizations and believed that, um, while we want to continue to have a strong commitment to the arts, that because of those, uh, rather than just saying, well, everyone will get what they got last year, we turn that to, uh, to the Area Arts Council for them to make, um, uh, those area appropriations. And again, that number should be seven thousand, but the total number is correct. Um, we do see an increase over last year's contributions to outside areas. And the last comment I'll make is, we took some suggestions from the board, and you'll find in your budget, um, and there's, there is a breakout of these different contributions in your budget, uh, with the correct, uh, information. Uh, we have limited outside contributions to a total figure of seventy-five thousand and then broken out, um, several items. We have broken out, if I can go backwards. The, uh, Welcome Center is a specific line item. The Heritage Museum, we of course own that building, is a separate line item. The Horse Park, uh, we're going to invest as a recommendation, our two percent money that comes to the city, that's where that line item would be funded from. Uh, the ambulance service, uh, and the Humane Society are also line items, and the library is a line item. And that is all we have from a presentation standpoint tonight. Of course, we have our next, um, opportunity to discuss the budget on the twelfth, where we have a recess meeting to continue this discussion.
Mr. Chairman, is this budget recommendation unanimous?
The, um, well, we'll ask, uh, Mr. Mills and Ms. Self. Do you mean any particular items or just the entire budget?
The entire budget.
No.
Ms. 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 Self, what are your concerns about this recommendation?
Well, I had concerns about, uh, some of the requests, uh, the amount that we funded, uh, that we did not fund them at all.
Right.
So, no, it was not a unanimous.
Mr. Cox, is there, uh, any recommendation for Starfall Area Youth Basketball? I know they've been, uh, funded in the past. What's your recommendation for this year?
That's right. You know, last year, they received five hundred dollars. Um, this year, we have a recommendation for, for zero. Uh, they as an organization are, in the documentation that they provided to us, um, they're a self-funded organization and did not appear to need our contribution.
What is your recommendation to the Starfall swim team this year versus last year?
The exact same. Last year, we, we've, in both of those examples, they've received upwards to two thousand dollars. Um, last year, they were, uh, reduced to five hundred, and we continued that plan to zero.
Mr. Chairman, we appreciate all the hard work that you've done on this, but as I look at this presentation tonight, you've, uh, brought back, uh, a majority recommendation from the budget committee about these outside contributions. Those contributions totaled four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and, and I'm of the mindset now that we have a lot of, of financial needs in our city. Uh, our Public Service Director has presented to us, um, a laundry list of, um, significant improvements that we need to water and sewer. We may be looking at water and sewer rate increases. We have roads and streets in our cities that are, in our city that are crumbling at the scene. Uh, we have drainage and ditch improvements that we need money for, and yet we can hand out four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And I just can't support a budget with this type of contribution. We, you know, giving our employees only a three percent pay increase, a proposed increase, uh, uh, and, you know, the cost of living, it just skyrocketed. So I, I just cannot support the budget and, um, as it is, and Ms. Self has mentioned some things that says, that she's not satisfied with the outside contributions. And, uh, but again, I appreciate the hard work, but I cannot support a budget with a half million dollars in, in handouts, and we have other, um, significant, uh, city needs that have to be met.
And, and I certainly concur, but to be careful with our wording, I, I know we certainly don't think of the library as a handout and others, but I, I have a feeling you mean some of the, uh, the other areas or what we consider to be charitable contributions, um, which even though we've reduced, I guess, two years ago, we're upwards to roughly a hundred and fifty thousand, we've steadily decreased that number, but we're not necessarily where we are, and, and this reflects compromise, but we certainly look forward to putting together a, uh, you know, an ultimate document that we can all support and.
In one last thing I want to say, Mr. Chairman, I think that, you know, our Infrastructure Committee, you can correct from wrong, we've identified at least about two and a half million dollars for overall street and drainage needs, and we don't have the money to pay it, and I think the budget may include about four hundred thousand dollars, and that's patchwork, you know, and, and we don't have the money earmarked, you know, just, you know, in the past, you know, several years, we had the money earmarked for streets and improvements, and, and the more these streets go without oiling, then the, the more they're crumbling. But I just want to mention those points of view. We appreciate the presentation.
And, and just to talk about infrastructure, and I certainly like to hear from the Infrastructure Chairman, we have put in, uh, money to leverage a one point five million dollar infrastructure improvement, which was, what the Infrastructure Committee asked us is what can we use to leverage, uh, to do that, and also what can we do, possibly do in one year? And that's where the one point five million dollar, um, came from, but what, at this point, uh, we're just waiting a recommendation from, uh, the Infrastructure Committee to be able to roll in, but we certainly have funds to, uh, to leverage, uh, towards a long for a comprehensive improvement program.
Do we have any questions from the public?
All right.
Just a second.
Alderman Cox, that when you get, I, I do have a question for you. On the, um, on the minibus, uh, and, and you were talking about, you had put in level funding from last year and requested additional information from the PDD.
Right.
Okay. Does the PDD know exactly what it is? Has that been communicated to them?
I'm not certain, but I'll certainly follow up with that.
Just make sure we, or have somebody make sure that we, they understand what it is y'all are asking for, so that they can provide information for your honest consideration. And before we get off that, is, is it structured to where we're going to go with the, the level funding, and then once they provide it, maybe come back and, and, and add back into that? Because, you know, we, we can provide money to PDD whenever it understands that.
I, I think it'd be a decision at that point. There's how they've determined their request, um, had some things that we needed to feel comfortable with, and, so it has the potential, if we have that information, then we'd be making a, a future recommendation, not an automatic. Of course, last year, when we didn't have documentation in, we just held it in a bag. Of course, last year when we didn't have documentation and we just held it in a balance until that happened and that, of course, got funded last month.
But for the time being, they're in for level funding at least.
That's correct.
Regardless of the.
That's correct.
But they may be able to get stuff to us before.
Right.
The budget adoption. In this document that was on the table tonight are all the specific recommendations listed here. Would you find them in there?
Do any of the other board members have questions? Are there any questions from the general public? It says the public here, yes.
Who owns Mississippi Horse Park?
It is a, it's owned by, in a sense, and funded by three different entities, the university, the county, and the city. And Ms. Miller's here tonight and give us even more direction and information around that, but we all, through, I don't know how many years ago, seven, eight years ago now, all came to an agreement around the type of funding that we provide for that. The university contributes a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year because they pay for utilities. The county contributes seventy thousand dollars and we're requesting seventy thousand from the city.
Yes.
That makes my request look rather measly, but I won't get into my, I'll get off my soapbox about our request for Red Cross, but I would ask that you seriously consider having your city employees trained in CPR and first aid through Red Cross. I think that's essential as a service to the citizens of Starkville.
Thank you. Any other citizen would like to make a comment about the budget or ask a question?
I have another.
Yes.
What will it be for community council to use that much money?
It's interesting as we look at several of the different ones and our job is very specifically tasked to get into the details in a sense. In Octibah County, of course, community councils across many communities, but in Octibah County, they do provide services that are, in a sense, unfunded because they don't have insurance or they don't have means to pay for that. But when you actually get to the details of their budget, because they do receive funding in other ways, through Medicaid and grants, et cetera, within the Octibah County community, revenues exceed expenses by about three hundred thousand dollars based on the information that they provided and that was one of the reasons we all recommended a reduction there because we do have very scarce resources and it appeared that in this case we might have needed it more than they did. But it did not reflect, based on the information, the services that they provide.
And then I'm so sorry, but what does greater Starkville development people do with all that money?
It's a, the request that they put in was specifically for various activities around the community, things like, if you give me a moment, I'm going to go from memory on this one. The partnership also is one of those multientities, private-public kind of.
Mr. Merrill, while the gentleman from five is looking. Mr. Cox, let me make sure I understand the amount that is in the budget, I think it's thirty-five thousand dollars for the partnership. That is in addition to the fifteen percent that the partnership receives as its annual distribution from the two percent tax, am I correct?
The twenty-five thousand dollar is in addition to the appropriation that's given from two percent taxes to the Visitor and Convention Bureau.
No, 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 the partnership receives their fifteen percent.
Correct.
Okay, plus the twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget. Yes.
While he's looking for that, I would just like to say regarding community counseling services, when I said that there were some things that I agreed with and some that I did not and some I felt kind of ugly about, that was one of them because I feel strongly about the services that is rendered through community counseling are needed and I do not agree with the reduction there and I just want you to know because I do know the service and I know that it's very much needed. So, I am against cutting that to five thousand dollars.
They cut money, they don't have money elsewhere and they have to cut.
They have, they have money, but you, we all have to understand that Medicare, Medicaid, they have cut their services so that makes their revenue short and they have to make it up somewhere because a lot of the clients cannot pay for the services that they need, for the medications that they need.
I think you really hit on kind of one of the, well, let me answer your question about the partnership. They requested funding for prospecting as we recruit businesses to our community. That would include advertising. They also put together a leadership, community leadership development program that members have, they've had for two years now. Community marketing and small business support make up the items that they were specifically requesting funding from the city fund and they also receive donations from their members. But you get into one of these issues of all of these different organizations are worthy and the question is, are they worthy of tax dollars? And that's one of those questions that I think every board has struggled with and certainly where you'll, I don't expect it'll ever be unanimous because we're making value statements on, is this organization better than that organization? In my mind, the question is, are they, are tax dollars appropriately being spent on places where typically individuals, of course, Mississippi is the most caring state in the nation as you look at charitable contributions, are they better served by individual contributions of the city? But we run into this every single year. One person right behind me, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am?
Two things. I agree with Ms. Self and Medicare and Medicaid have reduced their allowance that they pay payment for medical services for the year of two thousand and seven, so they may have a three hundred thousand dollar overage at one time, but it's hard to believe with the services they have and what they provide in those small enough funding that they didn't get from Medicare and Medicaid, that they can't mean all the services and have that much left over. I agree with Ms. Self and it's a very severe need and a group that does a lot for the community and I don't think you really want to see far less if you account if the community is not receiving these services completely, really, but. The other thing is if the partnership is already providing these programs that they ask money for, where they get the money to pay for them for, what are they going to use the money they already have for the vast portion of money?
I know that, and perhaps, and let me know if I answer your question, that they've received funding from the city for a number of years. Last year, we're at eighteen thousand and some odd dollars and that was the same contribution the city provided to them for their economic development activities. So, it is, has been part of a continuing partnership and there are other areas where we contribute. This past year, we contributed to something called GTech, which is a business incubator and the board previously has felt that there are dollars to invest in economic development that will reap returns to us in the future.
Well, what I'm saying is that they're going to use it for the same thing that they were already providing. I mean, they've had money in the past to take care of and if they continue to use those funds and take these funds that they're asking an additional amount and put them into other areas because they don't have other resources.
I think I answered a question that they're annual expenses and that's why, you know, it's just like, they're just annual expenses that need to be funded each year if we as a board think they're valuable to do so. Yes, ma'am?
Other questions? Yes.
Of course, I represent the museum and we're still working hard, keep going, but this is beside the point. What is the tax base for cities that are like size of Starkville and when was the last time there was a tax increase? I know this sound of popular thought, but you keep piecemealing and piecemealing and struggling and struggling. Is that issue ever going to be addressed?
Well, you know, that's a big question and I think it was two thousand and one when we had a one mil tax increase to cover roads for the annexed area and that ultimately was rolled into the general fund over time. You know, the question, at least, and this is just my opinion, is our tax base is enough to provide for basic services. The question is, as a community, is basic good enough anymore? And we hear all across the community, we want better parks, we want certainly much better roads and Vice Mayor and I certainly agree with that and on and on and that becomes our challenge, how do we as a board come to that decision? And then the other thing is certainly when I brought a predisposition to the board that I felt like government could operate more efficiently and over the last year, our departments, not only do they have an operational expense decrease last year of five percent, but they're continuing to take those steps again this year to control expenses and become more efficient, leaner and meaner, but meaner in a good sense. And it would, I would argue that we should continue in those, and that's again my personal opinion, that we should continue to take those steps to eliminate any inefficiencies prior to going and asking. And as an example, if we are giving money to outside agencies and we cut off several of them this year, it's hard for me to go and ask for additional tax revenues when we're not fully applying our monies in the best way possible to provide services to the community. But it's a very real question for us to answer as a community.
Other questions? Yes.
I want to do a listing check here. Did I understand you say on community counseling that the revenues received from Starkville and Octibah County exceed the expenditures in Starkville and Octibah County for community council?
The master budget that they provided to us lists Octibah total revenue at three point four million dollars and then it provides expenses of two point six million dollars, which comes up with a total revenue over expenses of eight hundred and five thousand dollars. Then they have an overhead allocation, as most big organizations do, of about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which leaves, according to the information they provided to us for the fiscal year of two thousand and six, of a three hundred and fifty four, four eighty-four number in their budget for the region of Octibah, which includes Starkville. And they do, and again, it's, are they worthy organization? Absolutely. They provide services to, they give a number here of number of people within our community that they, but it's considerable and there's no question, they do a tremendous job for our residents and others across the state. But it's, do they need our tax money as much as the other agencies or services do?
But in essence, as a follow-up, what those numbers mean is that the revenue being derived from Starkville and Octibah County are basically used to subsidize the services that are provided to some of the surrounding areas outside of Octibah County.
I can't, I mean, you would, I can't, I don't know what their total revenues are throughout the system to know whether they're actually subsidizing or if in fact they're running revenue surpluses for other, I can't speak to that.
Is anybody here in the audience that represents the community council?
No. Ms. Self?
When you look at the, at the numbers, let's be realistic. That's on paper. We don't know how much of that will be actual collected. We don't know how much of it will be paid by Medicare and Medicaid. We don't know how much of it will be paid by insurance. We don't know how much of that that's billed to the clients that will be collected. So, at the end of their year, we don't know how much money they actually have. So, that's on paper and I would venture to say that we, Octibah, Starkville, Octibah County, not the only one that pays into community council because it serves other counties
Other questions from the public?
I've got one big one.
Yes.
We're looking at a nine million dollar bond issue. Will anything, will we ever, ever be able to do a bond issue for the school? We have kindergartners attending the church. We're overcrowded. I agree with you wholeheartedly that if we're going to grow this town, it's got to be through good public education. When a person comes here from another place and sees the shape of these schools, they want to turn around and run. Will we ever be able to do any kind of bond issue for the school?
The, and Mr. May, you may be able to answer that question better than I can. The short answer is a bond referendum from a budget standpoint can be presented and of course voted on by the community. There's nothing, as I understand, their millage cap that would preclude them from offering a bond to the community for infrastructure improvements or other improvements, whether it be technology or other type of things. And I expect that, and I've heard from school board members that they're working on that diligently to present.
But what if you vote it wrong?
Well, in the past, the school systems have always had pretty positive input in regards of voting bond issues in that, in my recollection, I don't know of a single bond issue that the school system has proposed has ever been defeated. So, the city of Starkville, the city of Starkville, in good faith for years and years, has been very supportive of its public schools, including bond issues and other issues as such like that. They've been so supportive of the schools that frankly, the city has neglected to say, pick up monies in fears of people raising up arms that we're overtaxing. And if you look at the tax pile up there, the city has not, at one time, I think in the last ten years, it actually lowered millage, did it not? It actually lowered millage. So, we're looking at a situation where the city has not really gone up on taxes. It's always been, the schools have gone up on the taxes and it appears that the city's getting all this tax money, but that's not the case. The citizens of Starkville have been very, very, very supportive of the public schools here, to the point where most of the monies that have been received in a tax form have gone to the public schools. I don't think that a nine point two million dollar bond issue will interfere with anything the schools wish to get in the future. I just don't see that. I mean, the citizens of this community have always been in favor of strong public schools. Yes, Mr. Turner?
The people are proud that they can walk from here down to the police station. It's walking for the court system, but we really need to know, will the light play be included because the pedestrians have to wait until someone bag out to keep them getting hit with the light play being in the place that is.
We signed the notation today for a two million dollar bonding for the new light facility and we hope that a new building will be forthcoming within the next two years. Any other questions from the public in regard to the budget? Thank you very much. We will have an additional budgeting hearing on September the twelfth, is that correct? And we invite all of you here. And we may have to have a work session prior to that if the majority of the members here so desire. At this time, we have a large crowd here that are here to hear building codes and planning department with permission of the board. I would like to go ahead and move up to Mr. Hewlett's request. Is that okay with most of you?
Please.
Okay. At this time, Mr. Hewlett wrote a letter in the requesting that he is, that he have an appeal of the planning and zoning board of their ruling and also asked for it to be removed. I think there are two things in your letter that you asked and I will turn this over at this time to Mr. Faber here who has looked into this very carefully.
Mr. Hewlett, as I spoke to you this afternoon.
Mr. Hewlett, as I spoke to you this afternoon, we're, basically, the board is waiting to hear from you on what action you would like the board to take. The letter that you did write disqualified as an appeal from the Planning and Zoning Commission decision denying your zoning request. But it's confusing both myself and the board members who reviewed as to exactly what action you'd take. So I've asked you to come here to tell the board members exactly which action it is that you would like to take, as you referenced in your letter to the mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, Board. My request is based primarily on the fact that I never was heard at planning and zoning. We, and I certainly would want to apologize to Planning and Zoning Board and any members of the concerned citizens for that rezoning request that attended those meetings when I didn't. I think I owe an explanation of why that happened. It got press, and I certainly feel like that an explanation is deserved. The, I think it was April that I made the request for rezoning. At that time, I went and talked to Mr. Chuck Henderson and his wife about that, since they are leaders in the Green Oaks subdivision and have been organized in an effort to make sure that whatever happened on Stark Road was nothing that would hurt the community, their neighborhood, or detract from it. So at that date, I explained to them that I was going to try to rezone to a buffer one zoning, which by definition, I thought was a very logical choice. It was, the definition, of course, being a transitional zone between commercial and residential. And I also relayed to the Hendersons that I would try to develop the property with any inputs that any adjoining neighbors, certainly them, the Tomlinsons, or any other neighbors had, and those sorts of issues, but we would have to meet and discuss what issues concerned them. So Mr. Henderson informed me that he was going to be out of town on vacation for several weeks and asked if I would not have that meeting until I got back, and I, of course, said I would, and I came up to the Planning and Zoning Board and asked to be...
Excuse me, Mr. Hewlett.
Yes.
And I don't mean to interrupt you, but the question is, do you want to appeal the decision of planning and zoning commission request and not?
Okay.
That was the question, so.
The question I'll answer. I want to withdraw it if it doesn't penalize me to the point that I can't go back before planning and zoning. What I was leading to, Mr. Davis, was that there's a couple reasons why I was denied. One of them was I never was heard. Through, I don't think any fault of my own that I was going to get to that, but in talking to everybody, it became evident that I was going to have to do a lot more planning and meeting with the concerned citizens before I was going to have a chance to meet with the Planning and Zoning Board and have any chance for approval. I never was heard. I was told I would not be on the agenda, and, of course, I was on the agenda, and I was out of the state. But those are the reasons, that's the reason I was asking for. The appeal is to, for this board to allow me to go back to planning zoning and present a program, hopefully, that the neighbors there in Green Oaks and surrounding areas would approve, and...
Of course, you know, the planning and zoning denied your request, and my recommendation to this board that your request from a RE to a B1 be denied.
Exactly.
And so, let me make sure I understand this. You're asking tonight for us to deny the planning and zoning request, to not deny what their recommendation is, is that correct?
That's correct.
I see. Do other board members have questions you'd like to ask Mr. Hewlett? Their recommendation was to deny his request. He's asking for us to overlook their request and to remove it. I believe your letter stated from the, from the planning and zoning agenda, was that not correct?
My wish is to be able to go back and plan, do some planning and meeting with the neighbors, and come back before the planning and zoning board. That is my, that's my wish.
Richard, again, let's clarify this. What you're asking is that you would like to go back before Planning and Zoning Commission with some other request, not this buffer zone request? Are you saying this buffer zone request?
Well, I think the buffer zone request would be a good one, but with some other requests. I understand that if I'm denied by this board, I can go back and ask for another zoning, C1, C2, without having to wait a year. But if we're willing to trash the B1 zoning request, I assume that I can just sit down and y'all can deny it, and we can start over. I was going to try to explain to you that I was misled in planning, by the clerk upstairs is the reason I wasn't at these meetings, and I never was heard.
Mr. Hewlett, I think you're trying to argue your case here.
I probably am.
You are. And we, we just need, the board, I think, wants to know whether you want to withdraw your appeal and go back before the planning is on according to their guidelines. So, and of course, if you want to appeal to the decision, then the board has to decide how they want to proceed. So that's what we need to hear tonight, opposed to hearing any arguments.
Well, if I withdraw my appeal, then that, I'm not sure what happens at that point, Chairman Perkins.
I can't sit here as a board member and advise you. You may want to consult legal counsel. I can't sit here as a member of the board and advise you, but, Mr. Faber, you may want to give him some direction.
Well, again, I represent the board myself, and so I can't act as his legal counsel and advise him what to do.
I understand.
I can tell you, Mr. Hewlett, that the bylaws of the Planning and Zoning Commission under old and new business, and I'm going to quote it to you, okay? So that it's very clear exactly what it says. It says, "No application for a zoning amendment shall be considered by the commission within one year immediately following in a previous recommendation of denial of such request to the mayor and board of Auburn." And then this addresses your other issue you asked about whether your request could be withdrawn or not. You know, the issue you brought up about the clerk, whether the clerk misled you or didn't mislead you, which I'm not speaking to. I'm speaking to the bylaws, which say, "No application for a zoning amendment may be withdrawn from an approved meeting agenda without the consent of the commission." So what I'm trying to say to you is, it was up to the commission as to whether to allow you to withdraw it once it's on the agenda. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
So whether you were misled or not, it wasn't up to the clerk, it was up to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'm not advising you one way or the other. I'm acting only as a legal counsel for the city of Starkville and the board, but I'm just advising you what the bylaws say. So you have to govern yourself accordingly on what's in your best interest for your property.
One question, and I'll know what to do. Is there no means for this board to recommend that the, that I go back, that I be allowed to go back before planning zoning? Of course, I'd have to present a case for that, but if there's no, if there's no avenue for that, then...
Well, unless the, unless the board members here know some precedent where they've allowed in the past amendments to these bylaws, the bylaws are clear, they were approved by previous board in July 8, 2003. So unless the, this board members can tell you that's some precedent that there is...
Okay, well, I'll just go forward with the, with the appeal then.
Okay. Well, then I move that we set a public hearing date on September...
Appeal hearing date?
Appeal hearing date, yeah.
Appeal hearing date. Yeah, appeal hearing date on September, when is our next, not the special meeting for the budget, but the next...
19.
19.
19.
September the 19th here, on the front end of the agenda, to hear Mr. Hewlett's appeal.
Second.
We have a motion to second that we set appeal hearing date of September the 19th, is that correct? Before the regular meeting, or the first part of the meeting? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Hewlett.
Thank you.
Richard, so there is no misunderstanding. The 19th is the meeting where your appeal will be heard. No out-of-state, no, nothing, okay? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Hewlett.
Brings us down to the board business, and we have several items on here that pertaining to the CDBG grant.
May we recess just for a brief five minutes?
Can we get through maybe a couple of these little things right here and then come back to them?
Let's do Phyllis, so she can get all...
Yeah. She's moved them over there, look. She's moved them over there, to the front here. The first item we have is request for the approval of the combined notice to the public of no significant impact on the environmental notice that the public requests for release of funds.
A mouthful.
And the, and next item, can I list these together? Request approval to advertise for engineering services for the Rock Hill Sewer Improvement Project, because both these are related.
Yes, sir. Let me begin by saying, with federal money comes federal rules, a lot of hoops and loops, a lot of eyes to dot, tees to cross. And as Robbie has heard me say before, I am too young to retire and too old to be marketable. Take more than one bake sale for me to make up the money that you'd have to pay back if I allowed you or to misuse these funds or steered you in the wrong direction. So there are a lot of hoops and loops to jump through. We begin by the environmental review process. In order to be environmentally cleared, we contact federal and state agencies, notify them of your project. If there are no adverse comments, we proceed forward with format two. And with that comes the combined notice, which is a finding of no significant impact and request for release of funds. We advertise this once, there's a 15-day local comment period, it's sent to Jackson, there's an additional 15-day comment period. If there are no objections at either place, then you should receive environmental clearance from the state and release of your federal funds sometime around October the 11th. So with your permission, I have the combined notice for advertisement.
Let me see your copy, and let's just dispense with this. It may be in the packet I could...
It is.
And so you simply need a motion that we make the required advertisement, combined notice to the public, no significant impact on the environment, based on the assessment that was done, and the notice to the public of our request for release of funds for this sewer project in the Rock Hill community, and I would so move.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor, if there's not further discussion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
Now, that brings us down to request to advertise for engineering services.
Okay. There are procurement procedures that we have to follow since federal rules, federal money's involved with this particular project, which means we have to advertise for professional services. We'll need an engineer for this project. You know, it would be great if we could just say, oh, yeah, let's just go out and pick one, but because federal funds are involved, we have to accept and review proposals from qualified engineers. We have an established set of criteria for reviewing these proposals. Cost is not a factor in reviewing the proposals, so you have to put yourself in the shoes that you want the most qualified individual for the project, maybe not necessarily the cheapest. So I have a request for proposals to be advertised. We advertise once, solicit to minority engineering firms through certified receipt return mail and to the Mississippi Contract Procurement Center. I would like to recommend that you establish a review committee of maybe just a few people, rather than bringing these proposals to the full board, for all of you to sit here and go through at a board meeting. It's a little more efficient, more effective, if you could select a committee to review the proposals and then make a recommendation to the full board.
So then, you would like a motion where the board authorizes the request for engineering proposals for the Sanitaire Sewer System Construction Project in the Rock Hill area? And I would further add that the proposals be referred to the Infrastructure Committee for Review and a proposal to the, a recommendation to the entire board.
Second. We have a motion to second that we proceed with advertising of the engineering services and be reviewed by the Infrastructure Committee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take a short recess at this point.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavah County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can you join us, please, so we get this show on the road?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. We had a request to authorize, advertise for bids for the remaining, we had a request to authorize, advertise for bids for the remaining mowing season of Oddfellow Cemetery located on Martin Luther King.
I'll take that one. The, I believe we've about used the largesse of the police department up, and we probably should go out for bids. I think we probably have another two, maybe three months of mowing available. And I, at about, the Oddfellow Cemetery on University is about $900 a mow, I believe, and so I'm thinking that that will exceed, if we do it every two weeks or every 10 days or so for the remaining season, I'm afraid that will exceed the amount, and we probably need to go out for bid on it. So I was putting that in front of you, and also to give you the opportunity to ask any questions or give you the current status of the cemetery. I received an email, Ms. Benson was kind enough to put me in touch with, I'm sorry, that's wrong, Michelle Jones was kind enough to put me in touch with someone in Historic Society, and I got an email from them indicating that some of the things that we were talking about doing or that we were advised to do by the bodies that we had look at the cemetery, we were advised against doing, for example, terracing. We were thinking about terracing because it would make it easier to maintain, but the historic nature of it creates a problem in making some changes that are, I won't say that dramatic, but at least change the integrity of the historical nature of it. So I think we need to make some more considered decisions on how we're going to preserve the historical integrity, but still maintain the cemetery. And so with that in mind, if we can at least mow it for this season and for the remaining growing season, and then go forward, looking to see what we can do to preserve the historical integrity, and yet create a better situation in that we can at least raise the sunken graves without that causing a problem, according to my email. But there are other resources that I have yet to look into to determine how we can proceed with better maintenance, or what all we actually can do without changing the historical nature. And it may be that this board wants to, or that the historical integrity of it is not quite as important as bringing it into a different format, shall we say, or raising the status of it by putting in a fence, or even something that is aesthetically more pleasing might create a problem in that regard. So I think some of those issues need to be determined before we proceed, and we need to make a little more information available to the board before we go much further. But we certainly need to mow. So I wanted to put that in front of the board tonight, to see if we could go ahead and authorize just the mowing contract for the year, for the remaining year, before we do anything that's dramatically different to the cemetery itself.
Do we have a motion in regard to the mowing or discussion?
Are we certain that police department will not be able to handle that, Chief Outlaw, for the remainder of the time, or what?
I have asked, I asked the chief, and apparently, we have used all of the community service folks, and the cops program has used that, their volunteer time, and we're at a point now where, unless y'all have some... And we're at a point now where unless y'all have some resources for volunteers, I think we've used and abused the Police Department beyond their capabilities for another three months because we've got probably that much growing season left, September, October, November.
Well, while we want to carefully investigate some of the other statements you made relative to archives and history and what really are requirements and what are suggestions and all that type of thing, and we'll say that, I would go on and move that we advertise for mowing for an appropriate period of time into the future till we think the grass growing season will stop and request proposals for this.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us down for the consideration on my agenda for the employment and contract of the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor and Board, and of course, excuse me, the Vice Mayor has appropriately reminded us of the need to go ahead and deal with the contract of the city attorney. But a couple of questions here. If you will recall, we have recently made adjustments to the compensation package for the other legal officials in the city, both the municipal judge and the municipal prosecutor, both of whom participate in the public employee's retirement system. And I think we ought to get benefits the same for legal personnel if they would want to do that. Mr. Faber, have you, do you have any interest in exploring the public employee's retirement system aspect of employment with all the requirements that PERS puts on such a thing?
I would, on my line, I'm not aware specifically what those requirements are, but I'd like an opportunity to at least know what they are and look into.
Mr. Vice Mayor, any objection to saving this or deferring this to the next meeting?
No, sir.
Not the budget meeting?
To September 19th. No, sir.
September 19th.
That'll be fine.
And Mr. Faber, if you would explore those things so we can come to a final resolution of whether or not we would go with a contract employee or a city employee under PERS regulations and so forth, would that give you enough time to run the numbers of the thing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Plenty of time.
Very good. Thank you. That, we will wait until September 19th to take that item up again. We have a request to approve the First National Bank of Clarksdale Schedule of Fees and Paying Transfer Agent Registered Bond Trustee for the City of Starkville's Electric System Revenue Bonds, which we signed today.
Mr. Mayor and Board, of course, by way of explanation, the firm that buys the bonds usually designate paying agents. You always would have the question, why in the world are they dealing with some bank in Clarksdale? It's generally the purview of the purchaser of the bonds to designate the paying agent. So I would move approval of the First National Bank of Clarksdale to act as paying agent, transfer agent, registrar, bond trustee on the $2 million Electric System Revenue Bond issue.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
No.
All those opposed? Brings us down to departmental business. The first item is the airport business, approval acceptance of an FAA grant for AIP funds in the amount of $1,251,793 for project number 3-28-0068-011-2006. Taxway improvement and taxway extension with a match of 2.5%, 2.5% in airport funds. And if combined the two, the request approval of the award of the contract for the 2006 AIP project number, same number, 3-28-0068-011-2006, the Malouf Construction LLC in the amount of $900,845.25.
Mr. McLaughlin, is the airport board you advisory, you recommend approval?
I would recommend approval. Let's be specific here, would move approval of the acceptance of FAA grant for airport improvement project funds in the amount of $1,251,793 for project number 3-28-0068-001-2006. Taxway improvements and taxway extension. The local match required is 2.5%, which Mr. Harden calculates in his letter to us as $35,377.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please?
Excuse me, and of course, the other part was that, was authorization for the mayor to sign related documents on behalf of the city.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The next item was the request of the award of the contract.
For this particular contract, and this is the same contract that we are talking about that we have just approved, acceptance of the airport board recommends acceptance of the low bid of Malouf Construction Company for this project in the amount of $900,845.25. And Mr. Harden, I was trying to see, I do not have a bid tabulation on that in addition to Malouf, how many other bidders were there?
There was one other bidder, Ellis Construction, and their corresponding bid was $946,897.25.
Two bidders on. So I would recommend acceptance of the low bid of Malouf Construction Company for that referenced project that we just approved, acceptance of the grant.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Harden, was that what you needed?
Yes.
All right.
Brings it down to the office of the city clerk. First thing is approval of claims document.
Yes, correct. And with all the policies and procedures as related to the claims document being followed, I do recommend that the board approve the claims document for August 2006.
Based on the recommendation of the city clerk, I'm in approval of the August 2006 claims document.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Two nays. The second item is report of receipts and expenditures.
In your packet, do you have the report of receipts and expenditures?
Don't see it.
Well, it wasn't in my packet either. And we did change the way we were handling that because Debbie was working with Alderman Cots on the budget, so I assigned it to someone else and...
You want to just bring that to the meeting next week at the budget here and then we can just do that also?
And we'll do that.
All right. Go to item number three, if you would, please.
And item number three?
Is about your color.
Is my color copier. This is one that our IT manager, Al Queen, brought to me and said that some of the Alderman had asked him about a color copier.
Some of the Alderman?
Yes. Had inquired about a color copier. And he brought me the, for the, we're paying $298 for our parent copier and Icon would, if we would extend the lease, it would go from $298 to $334 a month. And it's a 60-month lease.
What, Ms. McLaughlin, what do we need a color copier for?
Now, that I couldn't tell you. Well, Al said some of the Alderman had asked him about it. So he was just...
I didn't ask about it.
I don't, he was just going on what he was instructed to do.
So is this your request or not, Ms. Adlau?
No, no, this is not my request and it is under me because he brought it to me and I told him I would put it on the...
So do you want to proceed with it or withdraw it?
Why don't you just let Mr. Queen come with you at the next meeting if you think such is necessary and presented, if this is not really your request?
Okay. Well, I'll have him do that then. No, this is not my request, am I?
You know, on the one hand, while, what was it, $36 more a month seems an awful small amount, paper color copy, then of course there are other associated costs when you get into the toner and the colors and all that kind of stuff. And we really, I think, need some justification for such a piece of equipment.
Okay.
60 months would be... You want to go to your next item, a report on the bond election set for September the 26th?
And yes, it's just an update on the election. The commissioners have been securing poll workers for the past couple of weeks and hopefully we have enough secured that's willing to work. And we're asking that anybody, if they feel like they want to work, you know, to contact the city clerk's office. Then the city clerk's office, we've been updating the voter rolls provided by the circuit clerk's office to get our rolls in as complete, have our rolls as complete as possible. Ballots have been ordered and we expect the ship date to be late this week. We're hoping Friday so we can start our absentee balloting, if not Friday, we'll start on Monday when we receive the ballots in.
You're talking about this coming Friday?
This Friday coming, that's correct. And the absentee, we're going to schedule the end of absentee voting on the Friday before the election, 5 o'clock. So that's September 22nd. The ballots, you and the board know that the ballots will be hand counted because the group that works on the machines wouldn't be able to program them for us. So we'll have to hand count the ballots that night. And my, in compliance with Section 2315-611, is that the managers count the votes and then bring them to one location. However, there's another code section that says that it has to be in public view. So if the managers count the votes at the precincts, we'll have to open them back up at 7 o'clock and let the public in to view the counting of those ballots. But after that, they will certify, the managers will certify their vote, bring them to the election commissioners and we'll tally the precincts to get an aggregate total.
Ms. McLaughlin, let me make sure I understand, because I want to make sure I understand this. So you're recommending that the ballots or the votes be counted at the polling places and tabulated here?
Yes, at the polling places. And then, well, no, we're taking them up to the courthouse.
Okay, so you recommend that the ballots be counted at the individual polling places and the totals be computed at the courthouse?
Yes.
Let me ask you this question. Would, would, am I correct that it may be a more open process if all the ballots were counted at the courthouse as opposed to them being counted at the individual polling places? In other words, of the six polling places that wants the polls closed, would you agree that it would probably be best, you know, to allow the public to be see the opening, counting of the ballots in open process if we were just to take the ballots from the polling place for the six precincts and bring them down to the courthouse for them to be counted? As opposed to them being counted at the individual six precincts?
Now, that would be as far as just an open process, but according to the code, the managers have to count those ballots on the hand-counted ballots. The polling place managers would count them and certify the totals, bring them to the courthouse and the election commissioners and myself tally those totals to get the aggregate amount.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Electric Department.
Mayor and Board, Tennessee Valley Public Power Association will be having their annual Accounting and Finance Conference in Florence, Alabama on October 18th through October 20th. And I would request authorization to send our accountant, Ms. Katie Ginn, to that conference.
Ms. Hattaway, if you have no objection, why don't we combine the three professional education trips? So I would move that Electric Department accountant Katie Ginn be authorized to attend the TVPPA Accounting and Finance Conference in Florence, Alabama, October 18th through October the 20th. And that Electrical Inspector Dale Reed be authorized to attend the International Association of Electrical Inspectors Conference in Fort Worth, Texas, October 8th through the 11th, 2006. And that Jason Horner be authorized to attend the TVPPA Staking School in Nashville, Tennessee on September 19th through the 21st, 2006. All to be authorized advances for out-of-state travel if necessary and appropriate.
Do we have a second to that motion? We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we've got two other items, I believe, that we have on there.
Mr. Hattaway, just real quick on those three, I was just going to compliment you on the information that you provided. It was so crystal clear what was going to happen, what the benefits were going to be, and then you even included the budget line items and I just wanted to thank you for that. It was really good work.
Mayor and Board, it appears as though we're getting into more and more underground work and we're facing a project now in South Montgomery that is going to be about a half mile of underground primary being put down. And due to that and several other projects that we perceive coming on us within the next year, I would request authorization to advertise seal bids for the purchase of a directional boring machine and an underground cable pulling machine.
Any discussion?
I have certainly no objection to the equipment and so forth. Let me... There was something about financing.
Right now.
The purchase that I'm trying to find.
Right now, I want to just go out for bids and get a sealed...
And then we can discuss the other later about how we...
Yes.
Okay, I was going to say I would prefer to do that and not rope into anything of financing.
Yes, right now, it's just trying to get bids on it.
Bids, which we take or not take as we see it.
That's correct, yes.
I would move then we authorize the advertising for bids of a directional boring machine and an underground cable pulling machine.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Ed, just one question. This is not, these are not two pieces of equipment that would necessarily come from the same place.
Oh, no, sure.
So we would get bids on the underground... So, we would get bids on the underground, uh, rather, the directional boring machine and then the underground cable machine. So, really, this will be two advertisements?
Be two advertisements, yes.
And just one more question. Didn't we advertise for a similar?
I thought we had done this before.
Yeah, about six, seven months ago. I mean, I have no objection to advertising for bids.
We bid for a trencher.
Oh, a trencher, that's what it was.
Yes.
Okay, it brings us down for a request from the Greater Starwood Developmental Partnership Vision Two Thousand and Ten Program for a commitment of fifty thousand dollars to be paid over a three-year period.
Um, Mayor and Board, we, um, we feel like that not only can we become more involved in the community by being a member of the partnership, but, uh, we'll be more aware of the new prospective, uh, customers, uh, citizens of the community. And might be of some way, by belonging to this organization, be able to help in attracting these, uh, ci- new citizens to our community. And, uh, I was asked to, to, uh, join, uh, as a, uh, member, uh, parallel with our neighboring utility, Fort County. And, uh, I'm here asking the board for authorization to do that and to be able to make, uh, this commitment, uh, over a three-year period, uh, on a, on a monthly, month-to-month basis.
Mr. Hattaway, um, you know, we have fifty thousand dollars to, um, in your budget, to, um, set aside for this commitment. It certainly seems like we need to look at rolling back rates. Um, you know, this board has, um, tasked you with the responsibility to bring us a proposal as to how, uh, you recommend rolling back the, the, the electrical rates effective October one, two double oh six, uh, per the information we received from you and the representative from the TBA, uh, agency. And I have not seen anything, uh, with that regard. I'm more interested in, uh, hearing about, um, how we can roll back the rates for our consumers. And I certainly cannot support you marking fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money to belong to this organization when we have just, uh, been presented with a budget proposal to give OC to, um, additional twenty-five thousand dollars up, not OC to the Greater Starwood Partnership, twenty-five thousand dollars up and above their allocation of the two percent tax distribution. So, um, you know, for those reasons, I just wanted respectfully going record, let you know that I must oppose, uh, this, this lucrative request.
Any other discussion in regard to this request from the Electric Department?
Thank you, Mayor and Board.
Brings us to the Engineering Department. Mr. Webb, we're going to listen to your presentation of a city policy.
You know, if he is on the clock, we should have taken him first.
Exactly.
It's fine, thank you. I was asked to, to provide a, uh, policy or guidelines for, uh, crosswalks and speed tables, something to slow traffic down on some of your, the city streets. At your, in your packet, you will find a guideline for both of these items or a proposed guideline, I would say. One's called pedestrian safety and crosswalk installation guidelines, and the other is a policy, speed table installation policy. And what these two documents do is it sets up a, a standard for the application or the identification, the approval and the installation of both speed tables and crosswalks. They don't recommend speed humps anymore because those are predominantly for parking lots. They, they really, uh, so they don't even, don't even think about a speed hump. Having a policy for these two installations is, is important because once you start putting them down, if you don't have some type of requirement or criteria for allowing them, every, assuming they work, everyone will want one on their block or on their street, uh, and you'll have them everywhere. So, uh, there are specific, uh, criteria for where they, they are allowed and how they go in. Uh, the requirements for locating the crosswalks deal mostly with, uh, the showing of the need for a crosswalk at that location, and then the safety for both pedestrian and the motorist as they, as they approach and go through that intersection or that crosswalk. It's based on studies done by the, uh, Federal Highway Administration and certain local governments. And it sets recommendations for both the marking and the signage for the crosswalks. The speed tables are actually a, um, um, just, just to slow traffic down. And rather than have a short bump, you would have a long, elongated table, about twelve foot long with a graduated approach and, and a graduated exit. There's two separate documents here. They, I'll take the first one, the speed table policy. It, uh, basically recommends these for local residential areas, not for, uh, your thoroughfares or your connector roads or anything of any high speed or high volume. It does, uh, recommend it for, uh, uh, location on the streets with, um, mostly residential. This particular one would set up, uh, both the, uh, the city's involvement as well as the support of the neighborhood. And it has in there under required, uh, support, uh, survey procedure that you, we would actually send out letters, or not send out, but furnish a letter of requesting and then of support. And then the, the people that are asking for the, uh, the speed table would go to their neighbors or a certain distance on both sides and, and get their response. If they didn't respond eighty percent to the, uh, affirmative, then it would be a done deal. And, of course, these are all subject to change by y'all if you don't like eighty percent, seventy-five, whatever. But it does, does ask for the community that, or the block that's going to have the speed table to get involved in it and approve it. Also, uh, there, this particular one, uh, requires for them to pay for it. You know, and pay for it upfront before you, you install it. That way...
You're talking about the neighborhood?
The neighborhood, right. The neighborhood people would pay for this particular, uh, speed hump upfront. And if they, in fact, want to take it off after a period of time, then they have to get the same support to take it off and then pay a additional fee to get it taken off. This court would limit it to very few, I would imagine, and ones that's got a real serious problem with speeding down that road. Uh, this is a, like I said, is a proposal, and it's here for your consideration and any input that you might want to give to it. The, the crosswalk, it's a little bit thicker document. And it was, uh, it has several different, um, um, applications of types of crosswalks. But predominantly, the two, uh, that it deals with is, uh, uh, let's see. Controlled, controlled locations and uncontrolled locations. That would mean that, uh, on controlled locations, we pretty much encourage or already in, installed crosswalks at all your stop, stop signals or four-way stops, freeway. Go ahead and put them there because they're a controlled access. Somebody has to stop in order to, uh, to, uh, the vehicle stops e- either one side or the other. The uncontrolled access is when you have a high demand for pedestrian crossing a street and you have, uh, no control. In other words, there's no stop sign, no stop light, no, possibly no intersection. And there are, uh, there's actually a flow chart in here that would go down and tell you, it's on page, uh, sixteen, to tell you, uh, just walk me through that process. You, you apply, you, you feel like you have a location, you go out and do a field survey, staff does, and then there's certain criteria you have to meet to, in order to justify a crosswalk in an uncontrolled, uh, location. It's a pretty detailed document. Of course, I didn't, I'd like to take credit for it, but I did, and I tweaked it a little from another city. But it is a result of a lot of study by that, that particular city and other cities combined with the, uh, Federal Highway Administration. So, we would ask that you take these two documents and, and, and look them over and get back with us on any, uh, change or addition or deletion that you would want so that we can have this policy in place and deal with some of the traffic calming that, uh, out through the neighborhoods as well as the, the crosswalks. Any questions? I know you all read and understand it.
Ready for the quiz?
I am on the short of documents about the law.
Bill, one of the things that, just from a philosophical standpoint, if, if I was in a neighborhood that was having or wanted a roof speed table, as we're calling it, the reason more than likely would be because there's speeding in the neighborhood.
Correct.
I guess philosophically, I'm having a little bit of trouble of why we're then forcing that neighborhood to come up with the money for the speed table. You know, they're having to address the problem that they didn't create. For example, the north side of town, um, Crites, uh, between Old West Point and North Montgomery is a huge transit that brings people from out in the county generally to the hospital or even downtown. And that's not traffic that the neighborhood created. Yet, you know, there's people buzzing through it, you know, forty-five miles an hour, same thing on Hospital Road, et cetera, et cetera. Why philosophi- why do we set it up that they, the neighbors, have to pay for traffic calming when they didn't create it? If you accept my example that they didn't create it?
Well, I understand that, and, and I don't think Crite Street would qualify anyway.
Okay.
Because it's not a minor street in a residential neighborhood. It's a, it's a street in a residential neighborhood, but it's not a minor. It is, it would be called a connector or a collector's street. Uh, go down to, uh, uh, some street in, in, uh, Green Oaks or, uh, Greenbrier or one of those streets that, uh, say, um...
Plum Road.
Plum Road, which, that's questionable. That, that could be a collector's street. But say Metta View off of Plum Road. Now, that would, would meet all the criteria. And if, and if the cities were to a- agree to put these at all the places that meet that criteria, we'd have them all over town.
Okay.
Some places where they don't need to be or not. I think it was an intent by the, the author of this to have, um, a, a good bit of participation in, in seriousness from the, the people that live there as to the problem.
That makes sense.
Uh, and again, it's just a, a suggestion. It, it doesn't have to be that way. You know, we could, we can meet them halfway, pay part of it. Uh, but it's, it's limited to minor streets, which is not going to go on, on South Montgomery or, uh, University Drive very well. It's not going to go on, uh, Crite Street. I, I think the bus routes, every bus in Starwood goes down Crite Streets, and they'd be raising cane.
Right.
But, uh, it, it has the criteria here that, um, um, it's got to be a two-lane road, just traffic going one direction, uh, one lane going one direction. It's got to have, I think, less than, uh, eight thousand, seven thousand cars.
Five thousand.
Uh, that's a five thousand. But there's, there's some pretty good criteria in there. And I think that was the intention, was to get them to buy in that everybody in town would want one on every block in the city. So, but again, it's just a suggestion. You don't have to take all of it, but I would wish you would go through it and, and all of it and look at it real closely because I think we do need some type of policy for these two items.
So, so Pine Brook Road would be, you know, fit the criteria per...
Perfect.
Yep.
I've heard you get a lot of speeding out there going back and forth to planning commission meetings.
This brings us to personnel. I believe you have about five requests on here.
The questions include, uh, a request to hire two people and to promote one. And then, uh, three of them are for advertisements to fill vacant positions.
Why don't we combine these into two motions? Uh, unless there is any objection, uh, from the board, uh, I would move approval of the, uh, hiring of two new firefighters, Samuel Pendle and Richard Coughlin, as temporary full-time firefighters, grade five, step one. And the promotion of, uh, Christopher Smiley from maintenance worker two to, uh, fill the vacant crew leader position, crew leader two position, grade five, step four. Uh, that is in the, uh, public, oh, is it landscape?
Landscape.
Landscape.
Excuse me, uh, right there before you go in further, there says an hourly salary of eighteen thousand. I don't think that's...
We hope that's a typo. I didn't, I didn't move the salary, I just moved the grade. Oh, and those are the recommendations for new hires, are they not?
They are, yes.
So, I would move approval of those new hires.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is subject to appropriate probationary periods in the standard city policies. Was that included in your motion?
Certainly.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Your next item.
Okay, uh, before I, I, I make the next motion on the, uh, temporary full-time street sweeper, make a comment or two about that position. Uh, why is it vacant? I'm trying to remember.
Okay, there was a, a work injury or worker's claim of an injury. And a temporary person filled that job.
Yeah.
And that person has since left, so we didn't need another temporary person.
Okay. I would move approval then of authorization to advertise to fill a vacant collector's position in the Electric Department, grade nine, step one. A vacant maintenance worker two position, uh, grade four, step four. And the temporary full-time street sweeper operator position, grade six, step one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, sir. Public Services?
TV Mayor and Board. First item, uh, up tonight, um, I put an explanation in your packet, but, um, there's a, there's a need for, um, for myself and Joel Reed and, and, um, Charles Box and, and us, just without some of these other functions, to have, have some, some more secretarial and clerical support so we can pretty much concentrate our efforts on more value-added activities. So, that's kind of the, the crux of the thing. And then also, um, we also need a dedicated person to, to get some of our, um, computerized management systems off the ground, specifically our work asset and inventory management systems. This requires data entry, um, tasks. It also requires, um, cycle counting tasks, um, those type of things, which, uh, which we don't find the time to, to do ourselves. And then, um, the, uh, there's a good possibility that we're going to be awarded the, uh, the funding to, uh, extend sewer services up into the Rock Hill area. And, um, we have the capability within our group to, uh, to prepare these easement documents, but, um, it takes a lot of, uh, a lot of hand time, uh, over at the courthouse. And quite simply, when, when I look at the magnitude of, of that task, I'm not going to be, be able to have time to, to do that. If you hire it out to an outside person, it, it's going to cost tens of thousands of dollars to, to do it, do it that way. Also, we need, uh, when Ed Slaughter, the office manager, is, is out on vacation or for any other reason, uh, Charles Box or Water and Super Superintendent is, is pretty much confined to the office answering the phone and doing dispatching duties. And then, as, as you see, uh, Vice Mayor Perkins alluded to it earlier, you know, we're having a, a lot of rapid growth in, in the city, which, uh, you know, some of it's going to be with grant funds, some with, uh, revolving loan funds. And along with any type of state-supported, uh, funding, there comes a lot of paperwork that, that goes with it as well. At the top of your, your sheet that's in your packet, um, this is how the overhead, uh, allocation is done on the left-hand side for revenue, uh, southward salary at, who is the, the secretary down in that area who works in public services under the Support Services Department. I was talking to Ms. Boyd earlier, and, and she indicated that, um, for the sanitation, uh, that's evolved into maybe more like a seventy-five percent, uh, load on that person's time. But, uh, but anyway, that's, um, that's currently how it's allocated budget-wise. And I would like to propose... like to propose, and I, I talked to Ms. Southward about this, uh, over the last couple of months and, and she has expressed a desire, if this, uh, need were to come to pass, that, that she would want to, to go on and, and learn some, some new things, expand her skills and possibly prepare herself for future advancement and, and promotion. I, I think as a, as a group, whenever someone expresses this desire, I think it's very important that we give them the opportunities to, to learn these skills and so that they can advance themselves. And it also puts, puts us in a better position for success, succession planning within our organization because, um, oftentimes, you know, when, when people, uh, leave, we, we really don't have people prepared to take their places. I think we've seen some of that in the last couple of years, uh, with department head positions here in the city. So anyway, that's the, the crux of the, uh, of my request. So essentially, I'm, I'm requesting permission, number one, to, uh, transfer Ms. Ri, Ms. Southward to the Water and Sewer Division, uh, outlining her duties as, as shown. And then also to, uh, in this, in our budget planning period, to also, um, allocate her entire, uh, salary to the Water and Sewer Division.
Mr. Mayor, um, with regard to this request, I foresee that we approve this tonight and the next meeting we'll be getting a request from our sanitation department head to, uh, to advertise for a secretary for that position, uh, her office. So therefore, I move that this matter, uh, be referred to the Budget Committee for its, um, review and consideration with a report back to this board at our recess meeting on Tuesday, September the 12th, 2006.
Did you make that a form?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a second to that?
Second.
We have a motion with a second that we refer this to the Budget Committee and have a report back by September the 12th. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Go to your next item, Doug.
Was that the recess meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's September 19th.
I mean, next week.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Um, the next item is, um, first of all, I wouldn't hate it the night y'all approved it. I, I really want to thank y'all for approving, um, sending Al Quinn and Chad, cheat him to the, to the, um, Arcview train out in San Antonio. We've been trying to get this project off the ground, um, for a couple of years now and as soon as they came back, they, uh, they were able to, to get down and start running with this project. So I feel confident now that we have the skills in place to, uh, to move this thing forward. Uh, I was always hesitant to, to invest any more money into it until I felt confident that we had the, the people trained within, within the city to, uh, to use our, these investments. And now I feel very confident that that's happened. The first, uh, thing we need to do, um, it's, it's a massive task to, to, to go out and physically GPS locate all the infrastructure in, in the city. That would take a couple of years. What we're proposing is, and we have, uh, an agency here in town that, that can assist us in doing that, is all our existing CAD drawings for water and sewer, um, have them converted over to the, the Arcview GIS, uh, format. They won't be in the exact locations on the aerials that they should be, but, um, but that's okay. As, as we run into situations where we see inaccuracy, we'll make the, the minor adjustments and, and correct those. And then the other sizable projects is we have absolutely no sewer, water and sewer maps of any of the annexed areas we've, we've taken in, in 1998. That's where we need to, uh, actually do a lot of field work, go out there and physically locate these assets and, and get them on the map. But, um, your approval is requested to contract or, you know, allow me to retain the services of the GIS department at the Golden Triangle Planning and Development District, um, at the rate of $65 per hour, uh, for personnel until December 31st of this year or until the, uh, if, if they, uh, want to increase that hourly rate to, uh, from the $65 quoted, uh, until that time, whichever occurs first.
Doug, I just had two questions for you. Since it's an hourly rate, do you have an estimate on what you think the total number of hours will be?
It's, it's hard to tell, you know? Typically for professional services like engineering and things like that, this is, this is the way we, we do it. Because if you force them to, to quote a firm price, um-
We certainly need a not-to-exceed amount. I have no objection to the, uh, Golden Triangle Planning and Development District and their very high-quality GIS, uh, staff, but just an open-ended $65 an hour until the end of December is a little too open-ended.
Well, we do that with Clearwater Consulting and the other engineering firms we use. So, um, you know, if we want to do that with this one and not with them, that's, that's fine.
Well, it's a different matter entirely, as far as I'm concerned.
I don't see it that way.
Like you say, you have sufficient funds in the budget. Do you have a, a budgeted amount or line item for it that could give us an idea of a cap?
Yeah, I've got, um, right now is the last budget statement, um, in our line item for, um, engineering services. Um, I thought I had put that in here. Apparently I didn't. But there's approximately, uh, $34,000 left in that line item for, for this year. And then we had also budgeted some Alderman Cox. I, I don't know, I don't have the figures in front of me, but, um, we had budgeted next year for these, for these services.
Okay. Would you be comfortable with that as, as your salary cap for this, this work?
Um, well, we can, I can, I can go back and, you know, ask for a not-to-exceed amount.
Or, or they can't give an estimate of what the project might cost based on what we furnish them and what they're doing with it?
Yeah, I can, I can do that.
Have that for us for September the 12th?
Yes, sir. Okay, um, okay, the next item is, um, requesting approval, um, part of the 2% money that was, uh, collected during the first 10 years of the 2% tax was, was earmarked for economic development. And we have a, a project that we need to complete out there at the Oceta Industrial Park to finish the, uh, the connection from, um, from the park to, or provide sewer access adjacent to the park so they can connect up to us. Uh, the good news is, is that all the materials are already bought. Oceta had already bought all the materials and that was going to be the big, most expensive part of the connection. And the only thing we need to do is provide money for the installation. And, um, so as Vice Mayor Perkins alluded to earlier, you know, we've got a lot of, um, lot of projects that are related to commercial development coming up in the next couple of years and, um, it's going to be a challenge to, to, to fund these projects. This particular, uh, project seemed to fall into the, um, criteria for economic development and, uh, Ms. Clark has indicated to me that, you know, there, there's sufficient funds to cover this, this amount. And I would like to ask your consideration and approval of funding this installation with a portion of that 2% money.
And just to further that, that 2% money that was collected in the first 10 years of the agreement is for economic development, but it's, it's limited to real property acquisition or improvement. And we do have a surplus of, of, we do have funds available for this that are restricted to that very specific intent. Um, and this certainly, in my opinion, fits within that. And I'd move approval of the use of, uh, $12,300 from that 2% fund to complete the sewer connection to the Cornerstone Industrial Park.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye.
Thank you. Um, next item is, um, I, I alluded to this earlier, is that other piece of the, um, of the, the Arcview GIS project is going out and locating the, uh, the infrastructure that's been installed since, uh, in the annexed areas since the, um, city, uh, brought those areas in. And we, uh, in order to do that, we need a, a pretty accurate GPS locator. Um, the, uh, Al Quinn researched it and so did Chad and, and they determined that, um, this particular unit, um, is, you know, a heavy-duty, highly accurate unit. It, it can locate within eight inches of, uh, if you come back to find, find something, it'll, it'll find it within eight inches. And this is going to be a, when, when, uh, the, uh, infrastructure and subdivisions are turned over to us, we can go out and locate them. Because what happens is after we accept it, uh, we think we know where all the valves and, and manholes are, but then there's a lot of dirt moving and site grading and those, those things get covered up. And, and I'll just give you an example. Um, about a year ago, there was some hydrants, there were some hydrants in Timber Cove that were not flowing properly and, um, the fire department, uh, blackbagged them as, as not usable. And, um, it took us about three days, three full days for us to, to, to find the valves that, um, were partially closed and they were underneath a, uh, a landscaped, uh, area that a citizen had put out on the right of way under a pile of mulch. So with this, with this technology, we can actually go back and, and within eight inches, we'll be able to find it and just within a matter of minutes. So I've got two quotes attached. One is from Trimble Direct for $10,990 and then the other one is from, uh, Navigation Electronics for $10,257. And we did budget for this, this item in the new construction rehab budget, uh, next year. We listed it as miscellaneous, but, um, this is what we, we had in mind. Now that all these other pieces have come together, we feel pretty confident about it. Uh, so with that, I would like to request your approval of purchasing the, uh, the Trimble unit from the low bidder.
Let's go ahead and deal with both of these procurements-
Sure.
-at the same time.
Absolutely.
I don't think anybody questions the need for the pump at the wastewater-
Right.
-treatment plant. So I would move approval of the procurement of the, uh, portable GPS locating unit from Navigation Electronics Incorporated, the low, uh, quotation being $10,257 and the low quote from Orman Welding Company for installation of a spare pump at the wastewater treatment plant, the low quote being $2,520.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion with a second? All those in favor say aye. You have one question?
Yeah, Mr. Cox, uh, you know, Mr. Devlin just said he's got it for the FY07 budget. Would you care for him to delay the purchase a couple of weeks until we get into the new fiscal year after we adopt a new budget, seeing as how that's where the money's actually budgeted? Yes, sir. Is that a problem?
No, that won't be a problem, Mr. Devlin. Not at all.
Perhaps we let the reflected motion, if there's no objection. Oh, I have no objection to that.
Excellent. That's reflected, I think, in the motion that would is delayed to the 2007 budget, which starts in October. All, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It brings us down to executive session. We need to go into closed session to discuss going into executive session.